All right, I'd like to call the October 19th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board to order. Brandy, will you call the roll?
We can just start with Cynthia and come all the way through. Just state your name and present for the record. Thank you.
Okay.
Cynthia Wiley, present.
Meg Fielding, present.
Larry Dukes, present.
Natania Walton, present.
Chris McGuire, present.
Okay. So we do have a quorum. So the first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the September 21st meeting. Were there any questions, comments, changes, adjustments to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 21 meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as recorded for September 21.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. And our next order of business is CZ 2021-0043, The Meadows at Indian Trail. Matt, you're on.
Thank you, Ms. Fielding. Good evening, Planning Board members. This is a conditional request for The Meadows at Indian Trail. That's conditional zoning case 2021-0043, located in the 6400 block of Bonterra Village Way. They're asking for conditional rezoning from the single-family district SF1 over to the single-family district SF5. And the intent is to build 106 townhomes if approved. Here is the subject property. You guys can see here with the little cursor, kind of there's a home there now that's existing. And then you've got two other parcels comprised there. So it's got the one home and then the wooded areas around there. And your attachment too will, at the end of your packet, that'll show you a little bit larger view. And it is surrounded by some medium and high-density developments already. Bonterra that we consider high-density, and we've got Poplin Glen that's come on board and it's under construction, and then North Gate up here. And I kind of broke down your areas here of the area surrounding all the zoning districts. So we do have the SF5 to the north. That's the Bonterra Village and Poplin Glen and North Gate. And then you have your single-family districts. It's not gone through rezonings in the other directions. Of course, kind of hard to count across the expressway, but we did throw those in there, those districts. And the site picture is along the site. You can see here where the center of the site's going to be, kind of where the existing home is. And then you've got the expressway over here, which is kind of south of the site. If you go onto the zoning map, you can tell, right, I was mentioning the SF5, Bonterra here, Poplin Glen. And if you see those kind of hash lines or diagonal lines, that means it's conditional zoning. So that's how Poplin Glen had came in. Some of the other projects, you see Greenwich Downs. I think it's Poplin mixed-use right here. So that's what those hash lines, if you guys ever wonder, on the map. And then SF1 is where we're talking about here. Kind of got a cluster of that, but then it's going to join the SF5 to the north, what they're requesting.
Okay.
Also, to expand, I didn't mention it in the chart, the ranges of lot sizes, you can tell they vary, you know, quite a bit, from 2,000 minimum square feet up to about 12,000 square feet, just in the general area. Going on to the future land use map. If you look back at the star again, it's showing mixed-use right here. And then this is also residential, like medium-to-high residential. And that's the Towns Comp Plan, a more recent plan, which is the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan. If you look here, that's where the project is shown. You can see the cursor kind of moving over. So that's showing more of medium-to-high density and a little chunk of mixed-use kind of right there. If you go onto the concept plan, which that's Attachment 10, should be the last one in your packet, you can see a little better. That's the 106 units laid out, and you've got your two access points on Bonterra Village, one at the north and one down at the south part of Bonterra Village. They're showing further amenities, a walking trail here in the back and around the pond, picnic area, and I think it's called pickleball courts, two pickleball courts. And then also, what's really important for the adjoining neighbors during the community meeting, this was a 25-foot buffer before, now it's a 50-foot, and they reduced their unit count from 136 down to 106. So between community meeting, which was about two weeks ago, so October 6th up to now. Going on to the elevations, this is similar to what you see kind of when you construct at Poplin Glen in different areas of town. So you've got some major materials, and then this cedar shake, that's some vertical, and then as well as horizontal, hardy plank. And that will go back through staff review during their statement of integrity and design. It's part of standard conditions of any conditional rezoning that we look back at. Those elements, what Town Council looked at in Planning Board to make sure that they're in line with those building elevations and with the code. And based on, you know, outside agencies, we're all still dealing with the counties, so they'll have to go through that process, among the other processes with the different agencies in the county. So that'll be done after conditional zoning, when they submit for plan review. Going back to that meeting, we were talking about October 6th and where the buffer was increased, you know, to kind of provide as much vegetation and screening from the new development as possible from the Saratoga Boulevard. And then consistency statement that we read aloud, would you find the developments that's located within the Rocky River Village Plan and the Seacrest-Shortcut Road Small Area Plan to be consistent with both adopted plans, which call out for the future high-residential land use recommendations as stated in Town's Conference of Plan? Development is compatible with other recently approved townhome projects in the immediate vicinity, and we also think it's consistent with both plans, Comp Plan and the Shortcut, Seacrest-Shortcuts Road Small Area Plan, by providing different housing options and fulfilling the medium-to-high-density residential near expressway interchanges. And that's kind of bullet-pointing the goals of both plans, the land use, housing, and density. So we did find the request to be reasonable. And our standard conditions, 1 through 4, and then 5 through 12, are kind of catered to this project. But that'll give you, I don't think I mentioned the density earlier. That gives you the density and talks about the buffer they're going to have, they'll do on the back and up front. So I think that concludes my presentation. Bryce Dementriak is here as the engineer, and then Tom Crouch is here with the applicant and the home builder as well, if you guys have any questions. And then go back to the concept plan.
Okay.
Oh yeah, and we got to present the applicant's presentation. Yep.
I think we need to slide to that one.
Yep. Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Tom Crouch. I'm with the applicant liquid management. We are proposing the rezoning tonight. I have a short presentation for you to hopefully clear up any questions you might have. And I'm here with Bryce Dementriak and Dan Zielinski, the home builder, to answer any questions you might have at the end. As Matthew already showed you, this is the subject site. You can see in relation to Bonterra Meadows and Poplin Glen. We have it as Poplin Meadows currently shown, and it's close proximity to the bypass, specifically the entrance onto the bypass. Here is the proposed site plan. We originally came before the Planning Board for the developer workshop and before the community meeting, we had 136 units proposed. The main feedback we got from both those meetings was the density was a little high. They didn't feel like it was congruent with the rest of the area. The density for the Poplin Glen was, Phase 1 was 8.55 units per acre. Phase 2 was 5.9 units per acre, and Phase 3 was 4.85 units per acre. And so we have reduced ours down to 4.7 units per acre to be a little more congruent with the area. Here are some of the renderings to show you, some graphic renderings of the area, what we propose. We propose, one, to have a ton of walking trails all throughout all this area, where they're made natural, walking trails all the way around the ponds, as well as a picnic area and a pickleball court. This will be an age-targeted community, so 55 and older, and pickleball is really the most popular thing we see in these communities now, to allow it to be a more active community. Here's another rendering of the pickleball courts and picnic area, and then the walking trails as well. Here's a rendering, too, of a different elevation. It will be hardy board siding, brick and stone throughout. And that's the zoning map, and then here's the subject site. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, sir. Just one question, the renderings you have here current, are they representative of the 106 units?
Yes, sir, they are.
All right. I'm not counting, it's hard to, but yeah.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah, what you've got there.
Yeah, yes, that's representative of how the streets and everything will look with the 106 units.
I can't imagine how you, what another 29 units would look like in that slice of property.
So we had a...
Do you know?
We had a cul-de-sac that kind of went up, and the units were small. These units, with being the age-targeted, are actually a little bit wider and...
Mastered down, correct?
Yeah, the master down. So these are 26-feet-wide units. And they have a two-car-wide parking area and a one-car garage.
Thank you. The entrance to here, can you show me how that is and how that connects and what road that is?
Yes. So this road right here is Bonterra Village Way, and this road right here is the expressway. Oh, sorry. So this is Bonterra Village Way right here. This is the expressway entrance on, I guess, exit ramp onto the expressway. So we'll just connect in off Bonterra Village Way. If you're driving down Bonterra Village Way and you pass the Bonterra Village entrance, the very next turn to the left is where we put our entrance in. So it'd be...
Do we know, it's like 300 feet down?
500 feet down from the Bonterra Village, Bonterra Village entrance would be our first entrance.
I'm sorry, I'm still not getting that. So the expressway, show me the expressway.
So this is the expressway right here.
Yep.
And right here on the other side, it's kind of grayed out right here, is Bonterra Village Way, and that's what we would actually connect on to. So it's Bonterra Village Way, exit ramp, and then the expressway.
So if you came out of your proposed development, would that car be able to get onto the Bonterra Express Parkway, onto the Monroe Bypass, within a couple of turns?
Yes. So if you come out of the entrance right here, take a right and head down Bonterra Village Way, you would come up to the entrance to get on the expressway right there. Sorry, the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
The other way.
Left or right?
There we go. That's the map. That's where you would enter on right there.
So those are the two exits, only entrances and exits from this development, correct?
Correct.
So I find that very unusual, that you'd be able to exit out of that and onto the expressway within a few turns with cars already doing 65 miles an hour.
So you're not able to enter onto the expressway, you're entering onto Bonterra Village Way, which then you can take Bonterra Village Way within a few turns to get onto the expressway.
It runs parallel to...
Correct. It runs parallel to the expressway. Sorry for the confusion. It's 35, you said? 35 miles per hour on Bonterra Village Way.
And so there is a buffer between that and the expressway?
Yes, there's a median in between there, like a, with a fence.
So how far would you go before you could access or get off of the expressway?
You'd probably go a mile and a half, two miles.
A mile and a half, okay.
Yeah, to access. You'd go up to Poplin and access it this way, and then come around, and then go on the expressway. So you'd go up and around and then on.
And again, the other developments that are there behind it, which one is that, to your left?
Right here.
That's Bonterra.
That's Bonterra right there.
Okay.
The ones in blue are Poplin Meadows, but I believe you all know there's Poplin Glen now.
Okay. So there's no proposal for connecting your development to anything else in Bonterra?
No, sir.
Don, I'm sorry, I exceeded my 15 questions.
So you'd come out on the right-hand side there, and you'd have to go up and around in order to come onto the Parkway?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're talking, how many units?
106 units total.
That'd be a lot of traffic for the area that you'd have to go around. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question. Thank you for reducing the density down to 104. I'm looking at the site plan, and I'm just a big believer in everyone should have equal access to amenities and equal enjoyment opportunity. It looks like from the site plan, if you could bring up the site plan again?
This one? Or the black one?
It looks like where the pickleball court and the picnic area is on that side. There's another opportunity at the other end. Would the developer consider making another park area or gathering area there for the people that, you know, purchase from the middle down?
Yes, we could certainly look at, look at... You're talking about right here?
Uh, yes.
Yes, we can certainly look at putting another picnic area in that area.
This unit, I've got to walk all the way down here to enjoy the amenities.
Absolutely. And we will, we will have walking trails, too, that will connect all the way around here. But we would certainly look at putting another proposed picnic area, gathering area over there.
What is the distance from the unit on the farthest left over to the pickleboard, pickle, whatever it is?
Pickleball court? I am not sure that...
Distance, rough estimation, Bryce?
I mean, a 10-minute walk, a five-minute walk? Half an hour?
It would probably be a five-to-10-minute walk. It wouldn't be a half hour.
505 homes.
Right, right.
Thank you for your consideration.
1,000 feet?
It'd be 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet from the last unit over to the pickleball court.
Okay. And you said, is it a restricted age community or just geared marketing for older people? How did you...
It's age-targeted, so it's just geared towards 55 and older, with the master down and with the price range and the width of the units. It'd be just geared towards them, but not restricted.
Okay. And how many bedrooms do the units have?
Two to three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
Two to three bedrooms is the mix they would have.
Okay.
So at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned the berm. I think that's what that dotted line is. What's the height of that on the front there by the expressway?
Right here?
Yeah.
That is, that is going to have a berm with a landscape buffer dictated by Indian Trail. Let me see if I can pull that up for you. It's on the site plan. So here's kind of a typical landscape buffer. So we put those trees and shrubs that Indian Trail dictates to kind of have some screening and hopefully some noise blocking as well.
So does that mean the top of the dirt buffer, and then the trees are on top of that?
Yes, they'll be planted on top and on the sides.
Say 10 or 20, that means that's the top of the soil that's distributed there.
The height of the berm, I do not know, but the trees will be determined by Indian Trail, and that caliber tree will be anywhere from...
Just quickly, I want to interject. The berm came about when they went to developer workshop, and council has requested that they match the berm on North Gate, so there's consistency. So it'll be the exact height and plantings of North Gate.
Okay. So I have another question. So retention ponds, how is that calculated? Is it by the amount of houses there? Because I see you have two. Some developments, I've only seen one large one. How does that get calculated?
So it's calculated based on the impervious area. So it counts the houses, the streets, the sidewalks, the pickleball court. It counts everything in there. And the reason there's two is just because of size requirements we had to have. We couldn't fit into one big one, so we spread them out. And it's just sometimes nice to have residents to have it behind their house, have a fountain back there, and you can look at it. So we spread it out and just to be more appealing.
And those are strictly runoff from the street?
Yes.
Matt, is there any stormwater issues up in that area?
I'm not aware of any stormwater issues or projects in that area. They, the developer will be required to handle all of their additional flow, so they'll do a pre-construction calculations and then post-construction, and they'll have to prove that they have not changed the flow or they've helped it. Sometimes it actually even helps because they over-calculate a little bit to be conservative. So this development coming in would not change, you know, flooding in any way, could possibly help.
That was one of the comments from the community meeting. Some of the residents are worried, if we have this extra impervious area, would that create flooding in the area? And we had Todd Hunzinger, the engineer that dictates that, on the call with us, and he was able to kind of alleviate some of that.
What was the calculation? Was it the water has to run out within 48 hours or hold it for 48 hours?
It has to hold it for 24 hours, then release it within three to five days.
So that's what those ponds would do. They would hold all that water and release it actually slower so that no one would have to worry about flooding on anyone's property.
And we also, we have an inspector on-site within our engineering department. So this is regulated through the state, but then we have another layer where we go out and confirm that, okay, you build it as is. It's, you build it per plan, it's functioning per plan, and then we hold what's called a forever bond as well, so that if something were to occur, the town would be in a position to be able to mediate that problem.
Okay.
So how, what is the requirement from the city with these retention ponds? Every one of these developments have these retention ponds, and what I notice is you get it into the dead of summer when there's a lot of pollen and other things, and there's still water, and they really look pretty disgusting. Is there a requirement that the city has on the development, on movement of that water, some sort of sprinkler or fountain or anything?
Yeah, so it's a balancing act that planning, we struggle with our engineering folks. They, it depends on how it's designed. It could be designed as a wet pond or a dry pond, so it really, really depends on the design of it. And then engineering likes, for liability reasons, for there to be fencing. Sometimes if you don't have fencing and you put a fountain and there's flow, it's not stagnant. It helps with pests and mosquitoes, and then it's aesthetically pleasing as well. Typically, we, from a planning perspective, like to see it made as an amenity, or either cover it up completely so we don't see it with fencing and trees or berm. So there's a little bit of a balance between meeting the engineering requirements and trying to meet those aesthetic requirements and making sure it doesn't become a nuisance. But it really, it really just depends on the neighborhood. Sometimes even when we are finishing out, we've got a couple of projects right now that are finishing out, and the HOA has taken over, and they have different preferences than what the plan's called for. So it's really case by case.
And the definition of a wet is it has water in it all the time, and dry means it could or not?
That's, that's my perspective, but Bryce is the expert, and he's saying yes, so yes.
The definition of wet pond is there's always, there's always water that is being held in that pond. Typically, depth is about three feet, some will be a little bit deeper. Your dry pond, it'll hold water up until that three to five days, and then after that it'll be completely dry from now on out.
So the roads are owned and maintained by Indian Trail?
Yes.
What is required in the new developments, Matt or Brandy, in regards to the roads, stop signs, white lines for, you know, adherence to stopping? Are those required on all the new developments or not, or how are we handling that?
So that runs through our engineering department. They have a land development standards manual, and all of that depends on the length, the speed of the roadway, you know, is it an internal street or thoroughfare? There's a lot of criteria that has to be met, but yes, they do require stop signs, and then there's certain criteria for speed bumps and things of that nature.
We, as the developer, when we come in and do something like this, we submit our plans in the engineering department, or review them and say, here's a specification you have to meet for us to take over these roads. And we build them, put a bond in place for a year, and then have Indian Trail come back within a year and inspect those. If it's met those requirements after a year, they then take them over. If there's any issues, we have to fix them and then do the inspection again.
And I don't think, in this particular development, that we're going to have a pass-through where people drive through. I mean, I think that's a benefit, because it's not connected to any of the other developments.
And this parcel, actually, just for a little bit of history, the Comp Plan identified it as commercial. You'll see that in the staff report, we harped more on the Seacrest-Shortcut Small Area Plan because the bypass coming through changed the access to it. So you kind of have to go around to Poplin and Unionville to catch the bypass, or you have to come up to Faith Church. So for it to be commercial is not feasible, and that's why, that's obviously why you see residential proposed before you, but it's for that very point. The access was cut off when the bypass came through.
That makes sense.
I'm just, I'm curious, are there any residents here that live on Saratoga? How's the noise off the interstate?
You can hear it.
It's noticeable? I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's like, hey, you're all there, and I'm looking at how much closer these units are, and they're going to have to know that we're going to have some air breaks every once in a while.
I can tell when a car needs a shocker or something.
Or new muffler.
That's good hearing.
That was one of the questions that came from the community meeting as well, is the noise. Brandy pointed out, the DOT will be the one that determine if like a sound wall, you've seen those big gray sound walls go up, they're the ones that actually determine that and how that goes in. But this neighborhood would be subject to noise, but ideally it would lower the noise for people who live on Saratoga, ideally, because you'd have more buffers.
Yeah, more structure.
Mm-hmm.
Am I not allowed to ask a question? Am I not allowed?
If we have public comments, would you like to add that?
Okay, before we start public comments, I just want to remind everybody that the Planning Board is a recommending body. It's not an approval. After we go through our process here, our recommendation goes to the Town Council, and the council is the body that decides whether this is going to go forward or not. So I just want, I always like to make that caveat before we have public comments, so that everybody knows what the process is. Okay. I have, I have a list here of people. Laurie, are these the people who wanted to make comments? Okay. Okay, so I have Juanita Woods.
I don't have anything to say. I thought this was the regular townhome meeting. And after I came in, I decided to stay.
Well, thank you for staying. Our... Our town council meeting is next Tuesday night at 6:30 if you'd like to join us then as well, but feel free to stay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone who wants to make a comment tonight? Okay, please come up.
My name is Sheila Nadada and I live on.
Okay, please come up, go speak into the microphone. I need your name and your address and you have three minutes.
My name is Sheila Nadada. I live on Affirm Drive in Bonterra Village. I would just like to know about the water pressure. I hardly have any water pressure now and with more, North Gate going up and Poplin Glen and all that, it's going to get worse. Where are we going to get more water from?
Matt, do you have any comments about the water?
So this.
I'm the water expert.
Hardly.
Because it's way out of my purview.
This was discussed pretty in-depth in the community meeting. Let me just pause this before it starts beeping on us. That is handled by Union County Public Works. From all indications that we have, this, in this project wouldn't impact the pressure in the area. But that is handled by Union County Public Works, so that's something that we have to be careful to separate ourselves from if, if we don't, if we aren't legally in charge of it. It's hard for us to consider that too much.
So if one of our, some of our residents have, have problems with water pressure, who should they go to? Should they?
They should call Union County Public Works. I live in this area and I, I personally have, have had some issues and found Union County Public Works very helpful in solving that. So they, they also, when we were working on doing our comp plan, we had a representative from Union County Public Works and that was one of the issues that I raised for this area and they were surprised to hear it. So I think that it's important that you communicate that to Public Works.
Thank you.
And as we all know, it's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. So the more, if a lot of people in your neighborhood are having problems with water pressure, you all should call.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Any other concerns? Yes, uh-huh.
My name is Elaine Strickland and I also live on Affirm Drive. And I was just wondering, number one, I, the traffic with all these people coming, it's hard to get out on Faith Church Road now. And the, the way they've built the expressway, the bridge comes all the way out. You have to creep out before you can see, you can see maybe 100 feet down the road to see if there's anybody coming. And on this side, there's a curve, so, and they're coming down there fast. So it's, it's very difficult. I was wondering if there were any plans on a traffic light there. This Bonterra Way Boulevard and, not boulevard, whatever it is, and Faith Church Road.
Now, are those North Carolina roads?
Yes, that is NC DOT. A traffic study was required for this project. And I'll turn it over to Bryce for, for comments. If you're, if you're finished with your comments.
I just have one other.
Sure, sure.
And my other comment is I was under the impression that that land, or at least part of that land, was wetlands, designated wetlands. I don't know that for sure, but I was under that impression.
Bryce can speak to that as well, absolutely.
Thank you.
So to Bryce Dimotrock with Eagle Engineering, the top section up through here is designated flood plain. So we can't build in that, but we can offer parks within that area. As far as traffic goes, we had to do a traffic impact analysis and with that, there were no road improvements that we were required to do. As far as North Gate goes, I'm not sure what they're required to do to improve Bonterra Village Way. So that's what we have on our end.
Right. So, so those, that's a flood plain, it's not wetlands, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. See, the, the issues with traffic lights and things like that is if it's a road that is owned by North Carolina Department of Transportation, Indian Trail has, has no say. We can't require a, a light or a stop sign or anything like that. So that makes it challenging for our residents. Believe me, I, I go around the block too in order to, to get out of my development at a traffic light because I don't like to play chicken with the cars coming over the ridge.
Can we email the North Carolina DOT?
They also have a website where you can submit complaints and issues as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Rich Galley. I live in, in Bimlich in Bonterra. But I mean, you guys sit up there and just thought crossed my mind, when is enough enough? Because, I mean, this area is getting saturated. There's another development right up the road. And now you're, this is 106 units. I mean, I'm concerned about the schools, you know? They said that it's 55 and over, but, but I think it's, there may be children involved in going, in living there also. So, you know, Poplin is right around the corner there and you see what it's like in the morning for these children and their parents to get the kids to school. And that's all. I'm just saying, when is enough enough? And I, I see the area getting saturated and, you know, Indian Trail's a beautiful area, especially where we live. And, and since I'm there eight years now from New Jersey, I've seen tremendous influx of buildings in this confined area. So that's all I have to say. You know, just maybe take that into consideration. Thank you.
Well, as indicated in the summary that Matt gave, the, this kind of development, this development is consistent with the long-term plan for Indian Trail. So if, if that is of concern to you, then you need to come to a council meeting and, and talk to, to the town council about your concerns. Okay? And, and I'll, having attended many, many council meetings ever since I moved here five years ago, lots of times, there's only about five or six people in, in the room. And if you have concerns, you need to come and talk to council.
We also are in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, so we'd love that feedback. We've sent out surveys as well. This area off the bypass is getting a lot of pressure, even other jurisdictions nearby, but certainly would love your feedback for the comp plan.
One thing, just on the school study, we did do a school study, which Indian Trail has and we can provide you of the results that did impact study of what this development would do. Is that in the packet they were given? There's a school study in the packet too.
It is 39 children within the school system. That's elementary, middle and high school together.
Thank you.
39? Did you say 39?
Yes, ma'am. The school study, it's a 39.
Yeah, come on.
I just, I just wanted to.
Please come up to the microphone. The meetings are recorded and if you're not at the microphone.
I got you. I apologize. I was just curious, and this is all new to me, the process of, you, you prefaced at the beginning of the meeting that you, you do recommendations to the town council.
That's correct.
Okay, so how, how is your recommendations are like a pro or a con or how has that evolved?
It's either, it's either pro or con. If we feel that something needs to be added or changed, we may have that as part of our decision. But then that goes to town council. Now, when, Brandy, when will this particular development come before council? It's generally about two meetings after this one?
Correct. So this development will be November 9th unless something changes. But if you received a notice, if you were in the notification area, you would get a notice for town council as well.
And then there's, there's time for public comments there at that meeting as well.
But I'm, I'm saying that after we leave and everything, do you, does this panel discuss amongst themselves the pros and cons of the project? And then you, you come to a consensus and then that consensus is passed on to the, to the town council?
Well, the, we get the information as we have this evening and any of us who have questions have asked the questions, which gives all of us the, the feedback of various perspectives. And then we will take a vote. There'll be a, a motion to approve or not and then, and we'll take a vote.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Questions are important. Clarification and clarity is really vital to our citizens and myself. You know, I've been here a long time and I've seen a lot of changes over 21 years. And I can tell you the changes recently have been pretty awesome compared to 15, 20 years ago. It was an interesting town structure. So we're on the right track as a town, I can tell you that, after 21 years.
I would like to make just one comment that, you know, as our area continues to grow, we, we have the beauty, it's such a desirable place to live. So there is a housing shortage of affordable homes in this price range. And I think to have the opportunity to go back to the drawing board, have the developer lower the density and come up with a beautiful site plan and increase the amenities and the walkability of these new communities that we are approving, is one way we do keep the area beautiful because people are going to continue to come to Indian Trail and Union County. We just want to make sure we build it in a beautiful, aesthetically pleasing and functional way.
You know, I went to probably 17 different Indian Trail Town Council meetings several years back for an item that was affecting my development as a homeowner over the course of about a year. I remember, I don't know if it's still in this building, but in the old building, there was a picture and a sign that said, "Indian Trail, the City of Trees." I think that needs to be amended. So I hear what you're saying. I've lived here 15 years. I just spent two hours getting home from where I work in Mecklenburg County because of a problem on 485. But as soon as you get off of 485, I mean, depending on what time of day, you're going to have issues trying to get somewhere, making a left turn, getting in, out, whatever. And it is becoming a problem. But when you see the amount of people that are coming to North Carolina from other places and it's from everywhere for a lot of reasons, the numbers I've read is like 10,000 a month coming to the Charlotte-Mecklenburg area. And now those people, many of them are not wanting to live near Charlotte. They want to live on the outside of that. So there's, there's tremendous pressure. I also, you know, grieve with you in a way that the city is changing drastically in just the short time I've been here.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote? Okay. I will entertain a motion regarding this particular project. I'd like to.
You say, make a motion for this project?
See.
You can say, make a motion for approval if you want to say that and then just say the.
The only, the only thing that was brought up during the discussion was Ms. Wiley's comment on the park. That is not presented in your packet today, so that would need to be, if the board agrees, they don't have to, whatever the board chooses, but that would need to be added as a condition of the approval. So I just complicated your motion for you if you want to include that, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brandy.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Project CC 2021 0043 with that stipulation that there be an added amenity equal to the one on the opposite side to allow equal access to all residents.
I second her motion. Okay, does that, does that cover what you wanted? It covers everything I was going to say. It did. Yes, it did. Okay. We have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye. Or do we have to vote individually?
Yeah.
I'll let Laurie make that call.
I'll let Laurie make that call based on the mask.
Sure, if you don't mind, it's easy.
Right, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, you want to start with Cynthia Wiley?
I motion to approve Cynthia Wiley. I vote to approve.
You should go last.
I'll should go last, sorry.
I, I disapprove.
I approve.
I disapprove of the proposal here this evening.
I vote to approve.
So the motion carries three to two?
Okay. Okay, is there any other business that we need to do tonight?
None from staff, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody for coming, especially members of the community. We really, we appreciate your, your feedback. You may not realize it, but we really do.
And thank you for, for letting us speak.
Of course, of course. Okay, I declare the meeting closed.